City Councilmember, Agency Director, Authority Member Doris.
Present.
Molly.
Present.
Mann.
I'm present.
Vice Mayor, Vice Chairman Chris.
Present.
Mayor, Chairman Perez.
Here.
We have a call.
Didn't we go to the same school where they taught us to say here instead of present? What happened to you?
I went to college. Now that was a softball.[38.90][38.90](laughter)
Okay. The invocation is Pastor John Metters from the Christian Life Institute. Henry, I wanted you to do it, but Marvin said no.
Your Honor, esteemed gentlemen, Father, we come here today, we thank you for this day that you've given us. We ask that you continue to bless us and guide us that we may do your will. Father, we ask you to forgive us for anything we've said, done, or thought that's not in your will. Father, we ask that you come to us today to give us all revelations of your word. We ask that you lead these men and the people in this audience, that they may have open ears, open eyes, and open hearts, that they can understand and receive your revelation, and that they can do what's right for them, for what's right for the city, what's right for the people. We know that the mayor and the city council, they love the city as much as you love us, Father. We ask that you could bless them and guide them, that they make goodly and godly decisions. In Jesus' name we pray.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mann, you want to do the pledge?
(inaudible) United States of America, and as we are God, we stand on one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I think I want to move it around. Jason, I want to move it around. I'm going to do Linda first, and then you and Ken are going to do the employees. Okay? Okay, Linda, why don't you come on up here?[203.01][203.01](applause) Every now and then, we give out a key to the city to somebody who we think has done a remarkable, I guess it wouldn't be a job, it would be career, of benefiting the city. And that is certainly Linda Lawson. I knew her in the third grade. And I want you to know that something happened between the third grade and adulthood, because she is a much nicer person than I remember in the third grade.[243.23][243.23](laughter) I still bear the traumatic (laughter), and she knows exactly what I'm talking about.[252.43][252.43](laughter) I was a sensitive kid. You were not.[258.85][258.85](laughter)
That's why I was a good earner.
Tonight, it is my pleasure to honor Kaiser Permanente Antelope Valley's Chief Administrative Officer, Linda Lawson, for her ongoing commitment to improving the health and wellness of the Antelope Valley residents. Linda is the executive leader of operations for five medical office buildings and clinics and more than 1,000 employees, providing health care to 135,000 Kaiser patients in the Antelope Valley area. As an important part of her leadership role, Linda sits on the Local Labor Management Partnership Council. She inspires labor and management teams to work together to achieve business and customer service initiatives. Linda joined Kaiser Permanente Valley Medical Group in 2004. Wow, that's a long time. Well, because I remember when she was at Antelope Valley Hospital. And I'm not going to go into the details of it, but the courage that she demonstrated while she was at Antelope Valley Hospital, I have not seen duplicated anywhere else. And as a result, lots of people lived who wouldn't be alive today but for your courage to standing up to some people who were endangering a lot of people. Is that a fair statement? I was truly astonished, because I got to be in the room when it happened. And every now and then, you get to see something that was truly remarkable. And you saving that many kids, I still get. Anyway, she worked at Antelope Valley Hospital for 25 years in leadership positions. Linda has lived in Lancaster for more than 35 years and is married with three grown children. She graduated from Palmdale High School. I almost graduated.[380.22][380.22](laughter) Became an RN and earned a master's degree in nursing administration. Linda's commitment to her community reaches beyond the healthcare arena as she works to enrich the lives of Lancaster's youth and future leaders. She currently serves as a member of the Antelope Valley College Foundation Board. She was a board member for the Children's Center of Antelope Valley from 2005 to 2010. She has also served on the board of the local YMCA. Tonight, it is indeed my pleasure to present Linda Lawson with a key to the city in recognition of all she has done to promote the health and wellness of our region.[420.00][420.00](applause) Let's get a picture. We've got to get a picture.
I got it. Got it.[440.13][440.13](laughter)
She's the nurse in charge. Vern, why don't you come in and get a picture? Vern, you know, ran the finances of this place for lots and lots of years.[452.31][452.31](applause)
No coronavirus, bro.
It's covered.[464.53][464.53](laughter)
Thank you, Rex.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.[469.53][469.53](applause) Or is it you? Hold on. Ken, you should come over. Come over.
I'm old. I'm old, and my knee is giving out, and so I'm going to go sit down.[481.53][481.53](laughter) So, a couple of weeks ago, I was invited to this assembly, and this is my third time going. And I have to say before I read this, this was one of the best plays that I saw, not only presented by this group of kids, but by young people in a long time. I was just blown away by the presentation and by the acting ability that they did. I literally thought some of them were who they were portraying. Seriously, I was really blown away. Amazing job. So, every year, thousands of churches and civic organizations throughout the nation participate in Justice Sunday activities. Justice Sunday was first launched by the National Alliance of Faith and Justice in the year 2000. This event is observed annually in conjunction with the Martin Luther King Jr. Federal Holiday. Justice Sunday honors Dr. King vocation, as well as the critical role played by volunteers of faith during the civil rights movement. As such, it also serves as a campaign to mobilize meaningful volunteerism. Our local Justice Sunday was held January 19th at the Lancaster Performing Arts Center. The theme for this year's program was deja vu. Deja vu. Deja vu. It is amazing how they took two and a half hours and went back 400 years. I was blown away by that. Under the direction of Commissioner Nigel Holly, a good friend of mine's, and the auspicious, reverent, fatherly Bishop Henry Hearns.[597.54][597.54](laughter) I added that. Many local students and organizations came together to present this impactful and inspiring program. And we want to thank you all for your commitment to carry on this meaningful event and the Antelope Valley tradition, all of the high schools, all of the choirs. This just wasn't Lancaster, but Palmdale and Lancaster came together. It happened at Lancaster, in Lancaster. But I want to just celebrate these young people and the people that put this on. So can we call up Mr. Nigel Holly, and can we call up Bishop Henry Hearns, and those that helped? Come on, you guys.[632.29][632.29](applause)
You've got a short video clip.
Okay. While you're coming, while you're coming, we have a video. So let's look at the video presentation, and then we're going to allow them to speak. And then, I have a bunch of certificates that I'm going to allow you to hand out.
I will do that.
Okay, all right. Let's look at the video presentation.[652.16][652.16](music)
And this is all to absolutely honor Dr. Martin Luther King and for his ultimate sacrifice.
It's Black History Month coming up, and of course, this is Dr. King's birthday that we celebrate. And I'm just glad to be a part of it, man, as an African American that is on city council now, and one that this city has accepted. And we just got such a vibrant culture in Antelope Valley. This is actually the epitome of what we represent in Antelope Valley, of togetherness and collectiveness and just people coming together.
I don't know how many years we've done this, but I know that Henry Hearns was one of the originators of Justice Sunday. And what a great time for us to bring the community together and celebrate Martin Luther King Day.
The whole message about Martin Luther King is community. It's about our community. And even yesterday, a lot of people from our community came out and did a lot of cleanup in neighborhoods. And even today, the same thing. You know, we are here just to, you know, take a moment and celebrate what Martin Luther King, his message and legacy, he left behind for us.[720.13][720.13](music)
Students that performed this play, not only performed in it, but they wrote it. All in all, these are some of the best students I've worked with in the four or five years we've been doing this.[737.91][737.91](applause)
Before, before we bring you up to have words, we also have somebody from Assembly Member Tom Lackey that's going to present you with something also, and then we're going to allow you guys. Come on, come on, come on.
We've got barbers on this ticket.
Oh, and bar, okay, all right.
Oh, my, man, what a staff.[758.13][758.13](laughter)
Scott Wilk's office.
Yeah, wow.
On behalf of Assembly Member Tom Lackey, we are so honored to, I am so honored to be here tonight. Truly, the creativity that went into the Justice Sunday event is outstanding and amazing. So, thank you for letting us celebrate this amazing event and be able to honor the students and everybody who put in so much hard, so much harder time and work into this. Thank you.[789.01][789.01](applause)
Good evening. Thank you to Antelope Valley Union High School District, to the city of Lancaster for supporting these students and another incredible performance. It's your parents, students, teachers, coaches, Nigel, you all should be proud. It was, the performances were incredible. It was a great program again. Thank you.[804.69][804.69](applause)
Hello, everyone. I am Donna Hill from Senator Scott Wilk's office, and I wanted to say that this program was amazing. I've done it, I've seen it a couple times, but it was awe-inspiring, it was amazing. The students were wonderful. Just great job to the bishop and Nigel and all that, all those who participated in it. So, we just want to say thank you for putting in the work and showing just how awesome the AV and Lancaster are. Thank you.[836.70][836.70](applause)
We're going to call all the children up that participated, all the young people, but we want Nigel and Bishop to come and have words. Come on, let's clap our hands for them as they come. Come on up, young people. Young people, come on up, come on.[852.82][852.82](applause)
We're going to call all the children up that participated, all the young people, but we want Nigel and Bishop to come and have words.
Come on, let's clap our hands for them as they come. Come on up, young people. Young people, come on up, come on.[872.82][872.82](applause)
We have a couple of our principals here that helped us to facilitate the event, so I want them to get a chance to just say hello really quick.
To who you.
As the kids are coming up.
Good evening. I'm Charles Dunn. I'm the principal of Eastside High School, and I just want to give all these students a great shout-out. It was a pleasure being able to be part of this, and it was one of the most moving performances I've seen in a long time, so great job.[908.63][908.63](applause)
Much, Laura, thank you. I'm Mrs. Debbie Keys. I'm the vice principal at Antelope Valley High School. And it's been such an honor to serve alongside with Nigel and all of those that brought this dream to our valley. Thank you, Lancaster, for the opportunity to use the LPAC Center. Students, you were absolutely phenomenal. Parents, thank you for creating such great humans. And it's so exciting for us to be able to know that we are teaching our children that their voice matters and that we each make a difference. Thank you.[952.19][952.19](applause)
So I think, before I say anything, I would like for one of our students to speak. Kalia, where are you? Come over here and say a few words.[971.01][971.01](laughter)
First and foremost, my name is Kalia Cannon, and I'm a senior at Antelope Valley High School. And I would just like to thank the city of Lancaster, as well as the mayor and the city council for allowing me and all these wonderful people around me to get the chance to showcase our talents and to give us a voice through performing arts. And I want to have, ah, sorry. And a special thanks to my mentor Nigel. He has helped me a lot throughout my whole entire high school career. And he is part of the reason why I'm a 4.0 student.[1014.44][1014.44](applause) I recently got accepted into four colleges, and I believe that Justice Sunday is a part of the reason that, and I just want to say thank you. And thank you to all the students who made this happen. You guys were amazing. I loved working with you guys.[1036.51][1036.51](applause)
To Mr. Mayor and to city council, and to all of the parents, school system, and that includes all, I don't know, I think we had about seven or eight of the high schools involved in this Justice Sunday. We started this off, I think, four years ago, Nigel?
Yes.
I think it was four years ago that Nigel and I were having some lunch or something across the street, and I told him what we were doing and invited him to be a part. And when I saw what could happen through these young peoples, through their vision, and through his leadership for them, I just said, "Let us back up." In a couple of months, I'll be 87, so I said, "It's time to pull up people like Nigel and other young men and women, even like our choir directors here and everybody else." So I just want you all to know that we appreciate the Antelope Valley working together as one to demonstrate what Dr. Martin Luther King put his life on the line and spent his life that we could be one and work together for the common good of the Antelope Valley. I can't say thank you enough to our mayor and city council. Thank you all.[1130.01][1130.01](applause)
It's probably never a good idea to speak after a preacher.[1139.41][1139.41](laughter) I want to thank Ricky Bullard. He always directs our music every year. He oversees students from all over the valley. He also works with all of the other choir directors to make sure that everything flows sequentially. So thank you, Ricky.[1155.21][1155.21](applause) We had Mike Colors and.
Mike McCullough.
Mike McCullough and.
John.
John Crocker.
Crocker.
Okay, as choir directors as well. I want to first of all say thank you to our mayor. Thank you to our city manager, Jason. Jason is amazing. You go to Jason, you talk to him, you say, "Hey, this is what we're trying to do." And Jason said, "Okay, let's do it." I want to thank my supervisor, director, Lee Derico.[1178.73][1178.73](applause) I want to thank all of the city council, of course, but more importantly, I want to thank the kids.
You bet.[1192.53][1192.53](applause)
Because more often than not, we tend to want to filter the voice of our future. We tend to want to filter our youth. But sometimes, we need to take a step back and actually hear what our future sounds like, so that we can start to position ourselves to embrace what is to come. These are our future leaders. These are our future city councilmen, our future mayor is probably standing behind us. These children and their voice is what matters going forward, because we're going to get old.[1237.33][1237.33](laughter) And it's going to be time for us to call it quits. And it'll be what we pour into our children that allows us to be successful in the future. So again, thank the kids for being honest and giving us their vision of what our city looks like. And you will be amazed at just how much work these kids did in 30 to 45 days. For a play the size that we did, it would take Broadway 18 months. It would take Hollywood two years. These kids put it on in 45 days. That is amazing.[1276.33][1276.33](applause) So, I won't be long-winded. I'm going to step out the way and pass it back over to my bishop. But again, I just want to thank the city of Lancaster for being the type of city that embraces our youth. Thank you again.[1308.21][1308.21](applause)
All right, let's take some pictures. Did we get pictures? I want to take pictures with, all right, we got the pictures? Okay, come on, come on.
Everybody tighten up.
Let's tighten up. I know, come on in front of me. Come on, come on, all the shorts, all the shorts.
Thank you.[1323.21][1323.21](laughter)
Okay, and pairs, after she takes her picture, if there's any pairs that want to take a picture, come up.[1326.21][1326.21](laughter) Okay, any pairs that want to take a picture, you guys, come take your pictures now.[1338.13][1338.13](applause)
Okay, so, because there are so many certificates, all my students will meet outside, will pass out the certificates outside, so that we can let the city council continue with city business. Thank you guys again.[1355.01][1355.01](applause)
Those two, no, they stay here. They go stay here. Oh, no, those are Antelope Valley, okay.
Nice shout-out.
I thought we had one for the employees.
No, no, I checked.
Holy smokes, Nigel.
That's a, that's a.
You would look like you've been in the gym, you're good. Good job, man.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.[1368.01][1368.01](laughter) Ken. Good job, sir.
Just wanted to mention real quick that a couple of the city council members, Ken Mann and also Mr. Doris stepped up to the plate just in case the kids needed something for Saturday evening, and Ken took care of it. So I just want you all to know, Mr. Mayor, again, I can't thank you all enough for honoring these kids, which means to me, you guys and us old guys, I'm real old, I'm old enough for most of you all of that, but thank you all for helping us to live on through the young people. Thank you, sir.[1379.01][1379.01](applause)
Every so often, we get to acknowledge long-term employees of the city, and we like to say around city hall that there's three things you need to be to be successful at the city. You've got to be smart, you've got to be hard-working, and you've got to be likable, all right? Pretty simple stuff, right? If you keep it to that, you're going to succeed. You can be two, you can't be just one, right? But three is what we're looking for, and the two people I'm going to talk about today capture all three of those to the highest level. First, I want to invite Pam Statsman up.[1401.41][1401.41](applause) Pam is our finance director. As you guys know, you see her every other Tuesday night. There's a couple of things about Pam that we think about. She's been in the finance department for 30 years. Now you picture what we, what has changed in the last 30 years and what kind of trust level it takes to manage your assets, right? Because that's what she does every day. If you put it together, her and her staff, manage your assets to assure that there's stewardship of it, that there's money in the bank, right? That the bills get paid, right? That the roads get built. And they don't necessarily, they're not at the ribbon cuttings, right? They're not at the successes. They're behind the scenes making sure all that stuff happens, and Pam has done that fantastically for 30 years, so thank you, Pam, very much.[1431.63][1431.63](applause) I'm also happy to announce she's going to be retiring very soon. So, she'll also be getting married very soon, so, I don't know, I don't know, the timing, I'm sure, has something to do with it, but there's a lot of changes in her life, and we're happy for those changes for her. You know, there'll be a hole in our organization, but we're excited for her and celebrate her 30 years of service, so thank you so much, Pam. We appreciate your work.[1462.13][1462.13](applause)
That's beautiful, thank you.
Did you want to bring your fiance, your mother up? Come on up. Come on up, Mom. Come on up.
My mother doesn't do pictures.
No?
Come on up, Mom. Chris, put your camera down.
We'll email them to you.
I have a connection. I can probably get them.
Thank you, guys.[1476.13][1476.13](applause)
And to many finance staff members that came to support me tonight, thank you very much. That's who I was pointing at. I see you all in the audience, and I appreciate your being in the attendance of the recognition. Thank you.[1482.13][1482.13](applause)
Even at 30, you'll still be your mother's little girl. That was fun, that was fun. The next person I want to acknowledge has also been working for the city 30 years. She comes, Janice, come on up.[1487.13][1487.13](applause) If any of you who know Janice.[1489.13][1489.13](applause) Not only smart, hard-working, extra likable, which is in the plus column. Janice works in the city manager's office, and she's worked probably in every department in the entire city, if I'm not mistaken. So, the value that she brings is not only her kind smile, her persona, who she is as a person and how she makes everybody else feel, but she has a knowledge that, of the city and what happens in the city. So when you call and you have something you need to get done, Janice knows where to go, all right? She knows who to call, she knows everybody, everybody likes her, she works hard every day, she shows up every day, she's on time, she's at the events on the weekends, giving her time. You know, when you're at the events, she's working them, right? And behind the scenes taking care of business, and we have so many employees like that, but Janice is the example, and we truly appreciate her service. And 30 years is a long time, we hope to have you many more, so congratulations.[1505.13][1505.13](applause)[1506.13]
So I don't know, I don't know. The timing, I'm sure, has something to do with it. But there's a lot of changes in her life, and we're happy for those changes for her. You know, there'll be a hole in our organization, but we're excited for her and celebrate her 30 years of service. So thank you so much, Pam. We appreciate your work.
That's beautiful. Thank you.
Did you want to bring your fiance, your mother up? Come on up. Come on up, Mom. Come on up.
My mother doesn't do pictures.
No?
Come on up, Mom. Chris, put your camera down.
Well, we'll email them to you.
I have a connection. I could probably get them.
Great, thank you, guys.
And to many finance staff members that came to support me tonight, thank you very much. That's who I was pointing at. I see you all in the audience, and I appreciate your being in the attendance of the recognition. Thank you.
Even at 30, you'll still be your mother's little girl. That was fun. That was fun. The next person I want to acknowledge has also been working for the city 30 years. She comes, Janice, come on up. If any of you who know Janice, not only smart, hardworking, extra likable, which is in the plus column. Janice works in the city manager's office, and she's worked probably in every department in the entire city, if I'm not mistaken. So the value that she brings is not only her kind smile, her persona, who she is as a person and how she makes everybody else feel, but she has a knowledge of the city and what happens in the city. So when you call and you have something you need to get done, Janice knows where to go, right? She knows who to call. She knows everybody. Everybody likes her. She works hard every day. She shows up every day. She's on time. She's at the events on the weekends, giving her time. You know, when you're at the events, she's working them, right? And behind the scenes, taking care of business. And we have so many employees like that, but Janice is the example, and we truly appreciate her service. And 30 years is a long time. We hope to have you, many more. So congratulations.
I thought we were much more riveting than... Oh, well. I want to move the council agenda up. Okay. And we'll deal with CA 1 and CA 2 now. All right? I'll go back to that. Okay, good. Okay, well, everybody knows there's a virus in China that's shutting down the country. There's ships all over the oceans where they're not letting people off. And we've never seen this type of response to a situation that involved some pathogen like this. I don't know where this is gonna end. I don't think anybody knows where this is gonna end. We know that it's getting worse. It's not getting better. I also know that the... In order for us to do well in crisis situations, we have to have a certain level of resiliency built into the system. And I'm not content with relying on the county or the state to come running to our aid if something terrible happens. Meaning, if this virus takes off and we start losing people at a much higher rate. Now, what they tell us is that a lot more people die of the flu. That is correct. But a lot more people die of this when they get it than ever die of the flu. By, I think, a factor of 100 or 1,000. I mean...
About 100.
100. So it's 100 times more people die from the coronavirus than die from the flu if, in fact, they get it. And it doesn't seem to be slowing down. With that in mind, I've met with Dr. Lawrence Stock and Dr. Jen Trum.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Who's an infectious disease expert. And Dr. Stock runs the emergency room at AV Hospital. And they've agreed to accept the position of deputy mayor and deal with these types of situations. They will have enormous power if, in fact, we start seeing infections in the Antelope Valley. They will tell us when we close the schools. They will tell us when we close employment. They will tell us when we do anything. They will have the power to do that. We will listen to them, and we will act. Right now, I think people should, the most important thing they should be doing right now is getting a flu shot. Because if you get the flu and you get this, you will die. There probably isn't any surviving both viruses at the same time. So if you know somebody who doesn't have a flu shot, take them to the drugstore and get them a flu shot. If, for some reason, they can't afford a flu shot or can't get one, send me an email at the city website. We will get them a flu shot. But the goal is to get everybody in this community inoculated for the flu in case the other thing comes along. And I think we're pretty well convinced that it will come. We just don't know how bad it will come. That being said, do we swear them in? What do we do? We have to vote. Oh, we gotta vote.
Yes, you need to nominate, then vote, then swear them in.
I'm sorry, what?
Nominate, vote, swear in.
So that's the nomination. Is there a second?
I'll second both CA 1 and CA 2.
And let's vote.
Were you voting on both at the same time?
Both at the same time, unless there's a... Yep, it's unanimous, so we do both at the same time. Does somebody have what I need to swear them in with? Good, that means you... That means they don't have it, and I'm gonna have to read it from a computer screen, right? You guys wanna come on up here? We're gonna do it up here. Okay. I solemnly swear that I support the amendment to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California. And it's all enemies. Foreign and domestic. That I bear a truce faith in the legal state constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California. That I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion. And I rule well in favor of this charge upon which the Constitution stands. Did everybody see this? If this virus comes, there will be a law that we only... Larry, do you want to read this? Some of you know, some of you don't know, that we are going to have to close the hospital. We have to close at what year?
2030.
2030? Because of the earthquake and the state laws. If we don't approve a bond issue now, we're not gonna have a hospital. It's that simple. Imagine what that would be like. The problem we're having is the Palmdale Regional Hospital doesn't want us to have a hospital. Makes sense if all your concern is profits. I mean, close out the competition. Unfortunately, if that were to occur, people in our city will die. I mean, how many people go through that emergency room? How many people go on ambulances to the hospital that won't be able to if that hospital closes? And this is very real. And I have all kinds of issues with the hospital that occur. I mean, you know, it's politics. What can I say? I have issues. But I don't have any issue at all with the recognition, we have to have a hospital. That's all there is to it. And Larry, who's our new deputy mayor, has written me a letter, but I think he should share it with all of you. Actually, it's to the...
Thank you very much, Mayor. This letter was written, I'm a member of the Medical Executive Committee at Antelope Valley Hospital, and our president, Promod Kadambi, is a cardiologist, who many of you may know, has been our president for a while. We had a meeting last night, and we adopted this language to send to Mr. Richard Allen, who's the CEO of the Palmdale Regional Medical Center in Palmdale. "Mr. Allen, Antelope Valley Hospital has created, was created 65 years ago to be the People's Hospital, a nonprofit hospital owned by the people of the Antelope Valley. Antelope Valley Hospital's sole mission is to care for the needs of the people of the Antelope Valley. Palmdale Regional is owned by a for-profit, publicly traded corporation in Pennsylvania that paid its CEO, Alan Miller, over $20 million in 2017. Measure AV will provide the funds to upgrade Antelope Valley Hospital so that it can continue to care for the people of the Antelope Valley. Without these funds, Antelope Valley Hospital is at risk of closing. Your negative public relations campaign against Measure AV is endangering the public safety of this community. As a CEO, you have a higher responsibility regarding the health needs of the people of the Antelope Valley than the shareholder needs of your parent corporation. Your negative ads are not only misleading, but they may end up causing human suffering and loss. Given the healthcare needs of the people of the Antelope Valley, there is more than enough demand for two safe and effective medical centers. As the physicians, leaders, and representatives of the medical staff of the Antelope Valley Hospital, we are writing today to ask you to immediately stop your negative ad campaign. Please do not run any further ads implying the opinions, thoughts, or feelings of the physicians of the Antelope Valley. Our hospital staff, including our highly valued registered nurses, are strongly behind Measure AV. The Antelope Valley medical staff, many of whom also work at Palmdale Hospital, Palmdale Regional, almost unanimously support Measure AV for a new Antelope Valley Hospital, the People's Hospital." Thank you.
You know, the last couple of years, the city of Palmdale and Lancaster have been working very well together. But I am mindful of the fact that this would not happen in Lancaster. If the situations were reversed, we would have a lot more say on what a private hospital was doing in regards to the impact on the entire Antelope Valley. And I would certainly hope that the city of Palmdale recognized that they do have the power to do something about this, and they should exercise it. Thank you. Now, that being said, we're all... City manager, anything to be removed?
No, sir.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Still moved.
Second that. Let's vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passed unanimously. Consent calendar, anything to be removed?
We need to remove CC4. I'll move that we approve the consent calendar as currently comprised, pulling CC4.
I'll second that.
Okay, let's vote. Passed unanimously. Fran. You were on CC4?
Yes. I got my question answered like this. He answered my question.
Fran?
She said she got her question answered.
Oh, got your question answered. Okay. Motion to approve CC4?
Thank you.
I'm older than you are, Fran, and these ears just don't work that well. Second that. Oh, on CC4, okay. That's wild. Well, passed unanimously. New business. Any speaker cards? No speaker cards? I think we want to hear it anyway. Jason?
Good evening, Mayor Paris and council members. Before you for consideration tonight is the adoption of Resolution 20-05, authorizing an amendment to the Fiscal Year 1920 Budget and Capital Improvement Program. Pursuant to a mid-year review and check-in, staff recommends inclusion of items that are shown in Attachment A to the staff report and to include those in the Fiscal Year 1920 budget. Some of the major items that would adjust the budget include funding the election that we have upcoming in April, funding for the LEAP's patrol plane for the last seven months. We did not include that in the original budget, pending the installation of the cameras on the streetlight poles. We also have a transfer between funds to fund the debt service on the bonds that we took out, the 2019 improvement bonds. We have recognition of a homeless grant from Los Angeles County and some minor adjustments to our capital improvement, increasing some of that funding. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
I'll move we adopt Resolution Number 20-05.
Second it. Passed unanimously. New business, Item 2. Any speaker cards?
None.
We will hear an update from Jeff Campbell.
Mayor Paris, Andy Campanione is gonna give the presentation tonight.
And here, Andy, I thought you were coming just to see us perform. I'm so disappointed.
I got out of bed. I was sick. I got out of bed to come do this.
Fist bump.
Right?
Well, now that you mention that...
Right. Get that on there. As you all know, you passed a year ago, year and two months ago, our core documents for the museum to move forward towards accreditation. We have now five of those core documents that have been preliminarily approved by the American Alliance of Museums, awaiting your approval today. Once that happens, we will be able to implement all of the rules and policies that are in these core documents, and we will have finished the very first phase of accreditation. So we're just looking for your seal of approval on that today. And I can answer questions about what the core documents are. It's a, I'm sorry, code of ethics, collections policy, our disaster preparedness program, our strategic plan, and I'm missing one. I don't know what the last one is. I can't remember. It's not that important. I think it's like a one pager.
We have a masked and tell policy.
Okay. Anyway, our staff has been working really hard on it, and we're super proud of being able to consider ourselves at this level, which puts us in almost a Level A museum. There's a couple of little things that keep us from that, but we're working towards that. And these are the kinds of documents and policies that keep the museum in best practices. And also, we're able to borrow, like we were speaking today, about that $1 million worth of Impressionist paintings. These are the kinds of documents and procedures implemented in the museum that will put us in the running for these kinds of loans, so...
You know, for those of you who haven't been going to Moa, they've got incredible shows. I mean, it's every bit as good as what you're gonna see in LA museums. It's not our grandmother's museum.
No. And for everyone that doesn't know, we also started our five-year partnership with LACMA. And they came to us. So we are officially LACMA, while LACMA is closed during their construction for the next five years.
And LACMA is what?
The Los Angeles County Museum of Art.
They're a little bigger than us.
They're a lot bigger than us, yeah. But we're super honored that they would come to us, and they respect our program. The other thing that just happened that also has to do with these documents is the Getty has invited us to participate in the next Pacific Standard Time Art and Science, which is coming up in 2024. They only ask a handful of institutions, and we were actually invited to the table at the very beginning. So we'll be for a very large research grant in working on that project.
Thank you.
Yes.
You're doing a great job. I really appreciate all that you're doing there.
Well, our community needs it.
Yes. That's right, we do.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any questions? Okay. I'll move we approve the presented core operating documents for Moa.
I'll second that.
Let's vote. Passed with you down. Any speaker cards on MB3?
None.
How, what kind of burning desire do you have, or can we just go without?
I would be happy to present if you'd like to hear it. In short, this is a name change.
I think we can live with the name change, without a report. Okay, is there a motion?
I'd like to introduce ordinance number 1072.
Second that. Let's vote. We have recognition of a homeless grant from Los Angeles County and some minor adjustments to our capital improvement, increasing some of that funding. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
I'll move we adopt Resolution Number 20-05.
Second it. New business, Item 2. Any speaker cards?
None.
We will hear an update from Jeff Campbell.
Mayor Paris, Andy Campanione is going to give the presentation tonight.
And here, Andy, I thought you were coming just to see us perform. I'm so disappointed.
I got out of bed. I was sick. I got out of bed to come do this.
Fist bump.
Right?
Well, now that you mention that...
Right. Get that on there. As you all know, you passed a year ago, year and two months ago, our core documents for the museum to move forward towards accreditation. We have now five of those core documents that have been preliminarily approved by the American Alliance of Museums, awaiting your approval today. Once that happens, we will be able to implement all of the rules and policies that are in these core documents, and we will have finished the very first phase of accreditation. So we're just looking for your seal of approval on that today. And I can answer questions about what the core documents are. It's a, I'm sorry, code of ethics, collections policy, our disaster preparedness program, our strategic plan, and I'm missing one. I don't know what the last one is. I can't remember. It's not that important. I think it's like a one pager.
We have a masthead policy.
Okay. Anyway, our staff has been working really hard on it, and we're super proud of being able to consider ourselves at this level, which puts us in almost a Level A museum. There's a couple of little things that keep us from that, but we're working towards that. And these are the kinds of documents and policies that keep the museum in best practices. And also, we're able to borrow, like we were speaking today, about that million dollars worth of impressionist paintings. These are the kinds of documents and procedures implemented in the museum that will put us in the running for these kinds of loans, so.
You know, for those of you who haven't been going to Moa, they've got incredible shows. I mean, it's every bit as good as what you're going to see in LA museums. It's not our grandmother's museum.
No. And for everyone that doesn't know, we also started our five-year partnership with LACMA, and they came to us. So we are officially LACMA while LACMA is closed during their construction for the next five years.
And LACMA is what?
The Los Angeles County Museum of Art.
They're a little bigger than us.
They're a lot bigger than us, yeah. But we're super honored that they would come to us, and they respect our program. The other thing that just happened that also has to do with these documents is the Getty has invited us to participate in the next Pacific Standard Time Art and Science, which is coming up in 2024. They only ask a handful of institutions, and we were actually invited to the table at the very beginning, so we'll be for a very large research grant in working on that project.
Thank you.
Yes.
You're doing a great job. I really appreciate all that you're doing there.
Well, our community needs it.
Yes. That's right, we do.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any questions? Okay. I'll move we approve the presented core operating documents for Moa.
I'll second that.
Let's vote. Passed with you down. Any speaker cards on MB3?
None.
How, what kind of burning desire do you have, or can we just go without?
I would be happy to present if you'd like to hear it. In short, this is a name change.
I think we can live with the name change, without a report. Okay, is there a motion?
I'd like to introduce ordinance number 1072.
Second that. Let's vote. It's unanimous, passes. So then we come back and approve it, right?
Correct. At the next council meeting, it'll be before you for adoption, and then it takes effect 30 days thereafter.
Okay. You know, I forgot CA3 when we moved the council, but we can deal with it now.
Very good.
The last meeting, we talked about naming the roundabouts, and who I'm proposing for the roundabouts is the one on, was it 15th and Lancaster Boulevard? 15th through 20th?
15th.
15th. That would be Marvin Christ. And the reason I had proposing Marvin Christ, people have no conception of, for the last 10 years, how much work he's put into this city, how many commissions he sat on, how many millions and millions of dollars of grants that he's been able to get, bring into the city. And much of what we've accomplished has really been because of his work. Now, admittedly, he could be politer to the mayor. He could be more supportive of the mayor, but we will forgive him for that. And that's who I'm recommending. There have been people who have proposed, other people. I, you know, I have to make decisions as the mayor, and the decisions that I made in regards to naming things is I prefer to do it for people who are living, so that they get the experience of having something named after them in the honor of that. Well, enough said. That's just the way I prefer to do it. The other roundabout, I would propose Dick Rutan. Dick Rutan, back in the 80s, first of all, he flew hundreds of missions in Vietnam. He is really a war hero. I think he was even shot down once. He has an incredible flight history. He broke, and when he was, what, in his late 60s, he broke the rocket speed record, private rocket speed record. He built the Voyager, which flew around the world without refueling, back in the 80s. You know, he conceived of the idea, he got it funded, he built it, and then he flew it. And he literally flew it in a coffin. I mean, it was just a tube that they were in for seven days. How do you imagine what that smelled like? But he did that, and he did it without refueling. Him and his brother are responsible for private aviation in Mojave, which is now private space, which employs an incredible number of people. And so I'm recommending Dick Rutan for 20th and L?
15th and, 15th East and Boulevard.
15th East and Boulevard. Why did I think that was L? Oh, well.
So the appropriate action would be to give direction, take action by the council to direct staff to go through the naming process. We have a naming policy that requires certain publication and other steps, so now that we know the proposed name, then we can proceed with that process. So that would be the appropriate action tonight.
So do we vote on that, or if they don't have any objection, you can just proceed with it, and we'll vote on it when it's done?
If you'd like to give the direction to go through the application and publication process, Mr. Mayor, then we can come back for the action at a later time, once we've done that publication, et cetera.
Thank you. Jacob, I just got this. Did you still want to speak to it?
Yes.
Okay. You're more than welcome to.
Good afternoon, city council and mayor. It's good to see you again, staff. My name is Jacob Johnson, and I serve, as you know, as a senior pastor of the Grown Valley Baptist Church here in Lancaster, California. Myself and a few of our members are present on tonight. If I would allow, if I'm allowed, I'd like to ask some of them to stand, please. Thank you. For most of them, it's their first city council meeting, so it gives them some due to be here to see what goes on. Thank you all for coming on tonight. Greetings again to each of you. And first, city council, let me thank you for your servant leadership in our community. It's my opinion that in my 10 years of living here, things have gotten much better, and I'm a happy resident here in this city. I believe it's a great city to live in, to raise a family, and to contribute to a part of a healthy, solution-driven, discussions-based city. Secondly, the purpose of my letter, as you know, Mr. Mayor, is in response to your request to the roundabouts. I am here to nominate and ask that my predecessor, Walter E. Forte Jr., be the person recognized for the honor at 15th Street West and Lancaster Boulevard. Although Mr. Forte went home to be with the Lord in December of 2012, both his imprint and impact are still felt to this day, as thousands still benefit from his work as pastor of the oldest predominantly African-American congregation in the AV and the first African-American contractor builder in the AV. Mr. Forte, who was affectionately known as Pastor Forte, found himself relocating to the Antelope Valley in 1959. At the time of his arrival, the church was located on the outskirts of the city of Lancaster, Avenue F, and Apollo Park. In November of 1966, he built what would be the third building of our church, and then in 1980, the church relocated to its current position on 20th West and Lancaster Boulevard. From 1959 until his retirement in July of 1986 and building, Mr. Forte made sure that families in our community had excellent living conditions. Houses of worship were also erected. He's responsible for building hundreds of homes, not just here in the Antelope Valley, but throughout the county of Los Angeles. Families have been able to build, or enjoy, rather, homes that were safely built. Children have been raised in them. And I also want to add that many of his family members, understanding that it's usually done with those who are living, we're requesting that this would be done posthumously. No disrespect whatsoever to those. I know Mr. Chris does a lot of excellent work, but in our community, this hasn't been done before. And in that time, when my predecessor, Dr. Forte, was living, these types of honors weren't really looked at for those people of color. And so we're just asking that you reconsider that and really think about it. It's really right down the street from our church, and we believe it would be an awesome honor and his honor. His wife is still living. His children are still living. His grandchildren teach and coach in our community, and our congregation will be grateful for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dick. Well, I don't know what to do.
Mayor, do we not have three roundabouts in the city of Lancaster?
We should have three roundabouts.
Do we not have three?
We do.
We do have three.
Shouldn't you have told the mayor? Okay, we got three. We'll talk. Okay? We'll make a decision. It's the live thing, you know? I mean, but we can talk about it. I mean, you know, I just, just a decision I made. Okay, next meeting, we'll look at the other roundabout, which the mayor didn't know they had, because they didn't tell me. Okay. Good enough?
Yeah, just about the naming process that direct them to do.
Now, what do I have to do?
I think you've made pretty clear direction as to what you would like done for the two roundabouts you identified.
Yes.
So we will now undertake that process and go through those procedures for the naming of those two roundabouts.
Okay.
Okay.
Oh, and Jacob, the one on 15th Street? That's outside his mother's house. All right, we'll work on it. I'm sure we can work it out. Good. The other thing we're doing is, you know, we're rebranding the city, and so there's going to be other situations, okay? But I think that that is an excellent point you made about how these things are done, okay? We good? Jacob?
Can I approach?
Sure. But, you know, when we teach lawyers, we teach them not to yank victory from the jaws of...
Well, yeah. And I think we all understand the work that those who you mentioned have. I think my main concern is knowing that he was here for so long and understanding Marv's mom, and I believe he'd go to church right down the street there as well. It's really a monumental piece. I don't know if people are really familiar with the history of our church being actually where it is. You know, back then in the 50s, even up to probably the 60s, African-Americans couldn't even, really weren't wanted to live in the heart of our city. And so the land that we sit on was actually owned by my predecessor, and the homes just beyond the wall, he actually owned all of that land. And he gave probably some people who worked for the city, who worked for the city, who've done some building for the city, were actually hired by him or learned their craft through him. So I would be okay if tonight we could get a resolution to one of them, since there are three. I would, understanding how Marv, Councilman Chris, has worked so hard, even though his mom is there, if we could find a way to make sure that happens sometime tonight, one of them, we would like the one on 15th Street and Lancaster Boulevard because of its location. But obviously, there are two of us who have some sentimental value to that. Maybe we can make a trade. Some sort of trade. But I really, I think, I think understanding the gravity of its importance, but, you know, if we have to concede to take one of them, we'd like one closer to the church, to where it may be, somewhere in that, in that, in that vein, in that respect. So we're happy with that, but, you know, like you said, we'll talk. But I think it is, I think it's imperative that there's some recognition there because of the history of that location, so.
I've always wondered what tenacious meant.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, the council can't take an action tonight under the policy to definitively decide what's going to be anywhere. We have to go through the process.
We're good. And thank you.
I'd like you and Marvin to work out the location.
Sounds good.
But you don't smile.
I think he's right.
All right. Well, I'll let you guys work it out.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
You know, you got to hold on to him. I'm impressed. Okay, so do we have to vote?
No, you've given direction.
Okay, good. Thank you. Next week, we will appoint the deputy mayor of, it's for the homeless situation, but I don't want to call it homeless, you know? We're going to figure out a name for it, all right, so everybody knows that we're moving in that direction. It's my hope that the new round of deputy mayors are very active, very involved, and take leadership roles. So we'll see, just so everybody knows what's coming down the pike, all right?
Can you go over the history of the deputy mayors, what, how they came about? Is that...
No, because I'm not prepared to do that. We can do that next week. You know how people just say, Rex, give a speech. Would you all like to take a break, or do you want to stay for the rest of the meeting? We good? Okay, let's keep going. Where am I now? Council reports? Sanitation?
We are working at the sanitation district. The sanitation district is allowing some of the farmers in our area to farm land that has sat vacant for many, many years. We're allowing them to use some of the water that the sanitation district owns. In fact, we're requiring them to plant different crops, so it's working good. We're allowing the sanitation district to do other things. We're trying to combine them, so everyone should know that we're trying to combine sanitation district, Water District 40, to try to get more control on them, so.
We have got to figure out a way to drop those sanitation fees. It has now reached the point where it is, it is getting in the way of positive developments in the city. And I know you two know how to do that somehow, somehow.
It is. It's cost prohibitive. It's Mr. Mann sat on the sanitation district for many years and held the price back for many years, but when you do, we're doing $50 million worth of renewed upgrades at the sanitation district. They feel it's necessary to maintain the price. We didn't agree. We lowered it, a lot lower than what they wanted to do it with. But kudos to Mr. Mann for stopping the raise, because it could have been worse. But I agree with you. They should be a lot less. Some of our businesses are actually paying up to a half a million dollars for a connection fee.
That's what we got to get fixed.
Yes.
That is crazy.
We got to get that fixed.
Okay, fix it.
Okay.
All right. Any council reports? Any reports from the planning commission?
I just want to thank you, Mr. Mayor, for getting out in front of this coronavirus issue. Personally, thank you.
Well, let's hope it's not a problem, but I don't think any of us have seen this happen before. I mean, they're literally tearing up freeways in China to hold people in provinces. I've been to China. They really like those freeways. They're not going to tear them up easily. Okay. Moving on. No action on California Choice Energy, no action on Housing Authority, no action on Finance Authority. Don't these people work? No action on Successor Agency. City manager, do you have any announcements?
Yes, a couple announcements. Want to report, we had a power broker lunch. We called it the power broker breakfast, I'm sorry, this morning with the real estate community, kind of sharing with them some of the challenges we're facing, as well as some of the opportunities that exist. It was a very positive outcome. Just wanted to share that as it relates to changes and what we've got going on. That real estate broker community is very important to what we do in the future from economic development, and it was kind of nice to share that with them, and we're going to continue that effort. We also had a community cleanup day in the Mariposa community, which was fantastic. And if you recall, we taught Ken how to operate a wheelbarrow at the Martin Luther King pickup day. We didn't have to teach him again at the Mariposa cleanup day, so good job, Ken.
We also learned what the zones were, and several times, we got in trouble for getting out of the zones.
Yes, we did know, we learned about zones. If you'd like to know more, Rhonda's sitting right there, but she told us to get back into the zone. Well, maybe you could educate the whole city.
I'll have a conversation with Andrew about it.
Well, you know, not sharing your knowledge is really a form of stinginess, you know?
We can help stir the memory. It was, actually, we were doing cleanup, and we were looking for different places. We were knocking on doors. Andrew actually knocked on the door of this house that had numerous piles of trash in the front yard, and knocked on the door, knocked on the door, and then said, what should we do? And they said, let's clean it up. So we cleaned it up without the approval of the homeowner.
You stole their trash.
We stole their trash.
We stole the trash, yeah.
And it was just brush. It was brush, but it was a lot of brush. And so the city manager was there, and Rhonda, and came in and told both city council people, the city manager, get back in the zone, so.
She said we were...
Todd, I'm a little concerned there wasn't an arrest. I mean, here we are.
Next time.
All right, moving on.
Couple more things, Mayor, just real quick. Sorry to take up all the time. The Jane Reynolds Park opening, the skate park, which we've been talking about, will be opening on February 20th, so Fran can give a round of applause, I know she'll be there in her wheelchair there celebrating as well. So that is going to be a great day for the community, so. And we all attended the Owen Memorial dedication and delivery, and that was just a fantastic event. If the community doesn't get a chance to go look at the work there, it was a fabulous job done by our Parks Department, our staff, and a number of volunteers on that effort. on that, on that effort. And lastly, the Toys R Us building, I know there's been a lot of questions and comments about the Toys R Us building coming down. We're in current talks with the developer of that site, and hopefully, they come out with some announcements soon. But, for those, for those who have seen that Toys R Us building lay vacant for a long time, it is going to be a nice change to have some new opportunities, not only for commercial opportunities, but for the community and jobs. So, we're looking forward to that announcement, and it'll be coming soon.
This is the time to address the city council agency authority on non-agendized matters. Speaker cards can be found on the back table of the council chambers. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. State law prohibits the city council from taking action on items not on the agenda, and your matter may be referred to the city manager. Thank you.
Russell Rodenbecker?
Yes, Mayor and City Council. I'm here to talk about the homeless issue, and again, trying to come up with solutions. Listen to the last city council meeting at my home, I wasn't able to be present at the last meeting. But the question of Kensington came up, and Mayor, you asked a question, is Kensington cost-effective? And nobody seemed to have an answer for that, or how much it even cost, until Vice Mayor Marvin McChryst commented it cost the county $15 million. I have some estate report here, I have copies for you if you guys would like to see them also, that discusses a little about the financing of Kensington. Kensington was put up to be approved for federal funding of $782,000 a year through Section 8 to help pay for permanent residents for people there. Also, in the project cost summary, the land acquisition was $0. From my understanding, the land was donated for, for the city to Inside Development to develop and open that project. Inside Development also picked up a developer fee of $2.4 million. The overall cost, permanent financing for the project, California Bacon Trust is 1.3 million. CDC of County of LA, which is LA County, is 7 million. It lists the city of Lancaster at 2.5 million. Also, a deferred developer fee of $835,000, and a tax credit equity, which is federal government, of $7,446,000. And this is to house 50 people permanently. I do not think that's cost-effective.
That's not accurate. That's totally not accurate.
Well, I mean, this is my time to speak. It's a flawed system. The flawed system is, it doesn't move people on to regular housing, a normal lifestyle. I want to challenge you, Mayor, and also the city council, to go out on a visit to the Dream Center in LA. The Dream Center's been in operation for 25 years. It's an 84, they have a network of 84 different centers in 11 countries and in 26 states. They, like I said, and everything provided there is provided free. Again, I don't have much more time. I would definitely like to discuss with you guys more about the Dream Center, and hopefully, at least some of you would take me up on going down there with me on a tour, because that is truly a world-class facility. Thank you.
How many people does Kensington service?
At full capacity, it will permanently house 150 residents, and for interim housing, 156. So, that's a total of 306 residents.
Thank you. You know, I, I think Kensington is expensive, I don't think there's any doubt about that. I also think that it, if you're, if you're looking at it as just housing, it's too expensive. If you're looking at it as taking care of people who are disabled, and are probably not ever going to be fully, fully functioning without assistance, I think it's, it's incredibly cost-effective. I'm very proud of it. I'm very proud of the work the county did, I'm very proud of the work the city did. It is a new approach to dealing with people with disabilities, especially mental and drug problems. This, this is a new way of giving people an ability to thrive in spite of their disability. And, and I'm proud of it. And yes, it's expensive to do that. But it's cheaper than prisons, and that's usually how we used to handle it. George Beatty.
We, we probably should give a big shout-out to Donna from the county and Supervisor Barker for helping us with everything at Kensington. So, thank you very much for what she did and how she did it. A lot of this money was given to us with grants. What Russell didn't say was that the area that the Dream Center is in actually gets about $4,500 per homeless individual, per person, in that spa, which we're Spa 1, we still get pretty close to $270 to $290 a person. So, the inequity, as far as LSA is concerned, as far as who gets what money, is still at a tipping zone. So, we're still doing far better than the area down in, I think it's Spa 4.
Okay. Please, George.
Mayor Paris, Vice Mayor Chris, council members, ladies and gentlemen. After you win your reelections, I would like to see the city adopt a plan on pulling over, citing these vehicles that are unregistered, not current, and maybe also have a resolution attached to it to where part of, or maybe even the biggest majority of the funds generated from it, go to the reconstruction of the new hospital. Because every day I'm out on the streets, you see them. Not registered, so that means most of them are not insured. And any one, two, and a driver's license, registration, or the no insurance is mandatory 30-day impound of that vehicle.
I don't disagree with you, but I also think that, you know, there's, there's a lot of problems out there we should be focusing on. And criminalizing poverty is probably not high on my list.
Well, you have no business having a car. It's, it's a, not a necessity with our buses and everything.
We can argue about that for a week.
Yeah.
Kurt Polka.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, thank you for allowing me to speak to you this evening. I'm also gonna be talking about a situation about homelessness, a little closer to home, quite very close. I live in El Domingo Estates, which is a condominium complex that butts up to the Antelope Valley Freeway, just east of the freeway between avenues J and Lancaster Boulevard. I've lived there for about six months now. Since I came in, I've seen the fences on both Avenue J and Lancaster Boulevard cut. I've seen some of the poles ripped out, and a homeless encampment has ensued in that area. Okay, again, just east of the freeway between Avenue J and Lancaster Boulevard. They've also cut the fences to El Domingo Estates. They've been seen on the property, and even looking in patios. A few things have been reported missing, stolen from the complex, okay? Since that's happened a few months ago, I've also seen the number of homeless in that area increase. So, I've tried to get some remedies. I called the sheriff, I was quickly referred to Office of Public Safety. Office of Public Safety stated that it's a complicated issue, the homelessness issue. There's a, it's a multi-agency coordinated effort. They said that the homeless have many rights, counseling, several rights, and that the city has priorities. And I'm a teacher, I appreciate all this information, I appreciate all this knowledge, and I'm sure it's all very true, okay? The person also said that they've received many calls from the, from the residents of El Domingo Estates and the surrounding neighborhood, okay? One thing I forgot to mention is that there's already a lot of garbage blowing up against the fence, and it's, the numbers are increasing, and this is the middle of winter, okay? So, you can imagine as time goes on, it gets warmer, what may happen, okay? So, the remedy I'm seeking is, I would like to see this bumped up a little bit in a priority. I remember, Mayor, you said about someone taking over, who's gonna, and you were hoping that he acted more, I think aggressively, I'm not sure the word you used. I hope the person does as well, okay? But I'm seeking in a respectful and humane manner to have these people relocated, where they can get the services that they need, and get better taken care of. We have passed two, in the last 10 years, taxpayers paid for two measures to help the homeless. I'd like to see that, that money go to helping these people, okay? And also, when this is done, I'd like to see it monitored, cameras and people, because I'm afraid that, and the fence is fixed, because I'm afraid if they don't, it'll just, it'll continue. And I have some pictures, if anyone would like to kind of share them with someone, and give them to someone.
At your wish. Lee, throw that area out.
Yes, sir. Well, we post everyone, that being, though, in our drainage canal, that is a zero-tolerance issue based on court decision. So, we can ask someone to leave immediately from there. But we clean up with the city public works, probably anywhere between 75 and 150 tons of debris every week. We have a process for, that is different, between public domain property versus private property, and we're very aggressive about that. So, we'll definitely take care of it.
I think you'll be happy with the response.
Thank you.
Thank you. And as to the cameras, we'll have those up within what? Six months.
Kurt, thank you for the way you asked for help.
Heather Varden? Now, you're gonna be the deputy mayor in two weeks, so don't screw it up.
I wanted to talk about a couple of events that are coming up in relations to homelessness. The advocate screening is happening at 12:00 PM at the City of Hope Auditorium on this Saturday, the 15th. That's a movie screening about what's involved and what it takes to actually get someone housed, what some of the barriers are, so that some, it's a great educational opportunity so the community can understand what kind of barriers we go through to get people into housing.
How long, how long is it?
The, the movie is 90.
The screening?
The screening, it's about two and a half hours. The movie itself is 90 minutes, and then there's a panel afterwards that includes some of the Los Angeles Sheriff's Department Host Team, which is their homeless outreach sheriff's team, the director of the film, two of the advocates that are in this, in the film, as well as our local outreach director for Spa 1, are all gonna sit on the panel and be available for comments after the film. And then another event that we have coming up at Kensington Campus is the Everyone In 101 Workshop. And what that is, is that's education on what supportive housing actually looks like, what bridge housing is, what permanent supportive housing is, what crisis housing is, and what the differences are for each of them. And those are the, the events that we have coming up. I did want to also mention, because of some of the other comments, the LA HOP system, which is the Los Angeles Homeless Outreach Portal. That's something that anyone from the community can go to and put in a request for professional outreach to go and reach out to people who are experiencing homelessness within our community. There, you can put in special needs if you see something like excess trash, or mental health issues, possible substance abuse issues, and then we can get people out there to actually connect them to the services. That's another, another thing that's available. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Fran?
And it's not mine. I still got my eight in my bag. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council. I still haven't got my voice all the way back, so bear with me a little bit longer. Actually, I was gonna bring up the skateboard park tonight. I was going to reiterate and also invite the public on February 20th for the opening of the skateboard park. But you beat me to it, Jason, thank you very much. Also, I wanted to ask about the, I understand there's gonna be also ribbon cutting for the community center, that's on, but I don't know, I don't think you said a date the last time you talked about it, because I couldn't find a date. What date was that gonna be?
I think, I think that's just an illusion. I think it really is such a place.
Wow, there is a community center, and it is being worked on, and I'm going to pass it on to Troy for the exact, it's in March, the latter end of March, for the first, for the ribbon cutting.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
The ribbon cutting for the community center.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, right now, it's tentatively scheduled for March 28th. We haven't put that out to the public yet, but there you go. Fran, you, Fran, you will be notified, do not worry. Yes, yes.
Well, thank you very much. And I also want to thank everyone here for all your efforts you do, do for this community. A lot of people don't realize how much you do do. It doesn't, that didn't sound right, did it? But my compliments to all of you, and thank you again for letting me help and do what I do. God bless you all.
Thank you, Fran.
Thank you.
And Troy, we appreciate how hard you and the team has been working on the community center. I do, personally.
So, when, when you were growing up, did, did you hear the word suck up a lot?
Never heard that term before in my life.
Perhaps you should have. All right. March, right, Troy? Troy, March?
28.
By the end of March of 2020.
2021, no, just kidding. Assuming your schedule allows for that.
All right. Troya Johnson?
Good evening, council. My name is Troya Johnson, Air Force veteran, disabled vet, actually. And I'm, I'm coming, in reference and concern with the lack of resources in Antelope Valley for us veterans, especially us disabled vets. Speaking of homelessness, I dealt with homelessness before, and I've just got that taken care of through the HUD VAS program, I'm not sure if you guys are familiar with that, through the VA. The problem with that is, there's no resources available in Antelope Valley. I've, I've contacted, researched, called, emailed, texted, showed up at several different locations in Antelope Valley. I've contacted your office, I've contacted Scott Wilk's office, and I still am no closer to any closure as far as supportive services. Let's say supportive services are not necessarily mental health, just supportive services for like housing, or furnishing for your house, or, you know, they house you, but they don't give you anything else. So, that's why a lot of veterans end up back homeless again, because, okay, we house you, but then we leave you alone. So, there's no supportive services for veterans that I know of up here. In LA, yes, there's plenty of services. But the problem with us up here in Antelope Valley is that we're, we're kind of shoehorned away from, from the city of Los Angeles, even though this is Los Angeles County, and they don't, they don't really care. I tell them, I live in AV, I live in Lancaster, but we don't provide services in Antelope Valley. And I always go back to, well, isn't this still the county of Los Angeles? And that's, it doesn't matter. So, my concern is the lack of resources for veterans up here in Antelope Valley. When I say lack of resource, I mean supportive services. I've contacted, like I said, I've contacted AmVet, DAV, Mental Health, America, Grace Resource Center, Valley Oasis, Vet Resource Center in Palmdale, I mean, name it. I've contacted them in Antelope Valley. And right now, the, the most I've gotten as far as assistance was from a church in Palmdale, Lighthouse Assembly of God. So, my concern again is for myself and the veterans before me. So, my concern again is for myself and the veterans before me, and the veterans after me, who's going to come to Antelope Valley and expect a good supportive lifestyle of being a veteran. So, that was my concern. I served my country proudly for 12 years, got hurt doing it, and now I just want a little help myself. Thank you.
Toya, there's, we've tried, I agree with everything that you said.
Yes, sir.
So, we've tried to bridge that gap by allowing, and working with the Supervisor Barker's office, to bridge that gap by allowing our veterans to ride our buses free to Westwood and allow them to go there to get those services. So, we're trying to bridge that gap, but like they said on a couple previous people at the podium, that it's jurisdictional.
Right.
It's, we really don't control that stuff, but we try to control the people that do control that stuff.
Right.
So, we're working with those people to do it, but the supervisor's been working with us, ABTA has been trying to do everything, you know, as far as giving veterans the ability to ride for free down to Westwood. So, we're trying to bridge the gap.
Right.
And we're trying to get those services up here. So, we're working on it.
Right. Is there any way I can address the councilman personally, in the near future, about this issue? Or this is it?
No, you can talk to us on an individual basis. Come up afterwards, we'll give you our number.
Thank you. Thank you, council.
Thank you. David Paul.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, good evening. It's always fun to come to the meeting, and I thank you for the opportunity to participate. And there was a lot of good things tonight here, the museum, the Steve Owen Memorial, that was beautiful, and the neighborhood cleanups, those things were pretty great. It's good to know, Councilman man, that a 70-year-old can still push a wheelbarrow. I appreciate that.
Rex wasn't there.
You know, just Marvin and I was there. Thanks for...
Rex already knew how to do a wheelbarrow.
Thanks for your outreach, Vice Mayor Chris, to our veteran friend. We do what we can here in this city, and that's why I love it, and there's a lot of great things. Kensington is a wonderful place that'll serve as a model in the future, and the way we all work together, it's, we have a lot of tough problems that are coming up. And I just wanted to add, before I leave here, I've been put in a little bit of a rough situation, because Marvin, I like the roundabout "named after you" because you don't want it named after you. And my friend Jacob over here makes great points, and so I'm kind of in the middle of it, but I'm sure you'll work it out. So, that's the spirit of the city. Let's work it out, and thank you, and good evening.
Mayor, Marvin put me up to that comment.
Marvin has broad shoulders, he'll take blame from both of you.
Maybe beat is a strong word. Discipline, you and I.
All right. So, it explains a lot about you, though.
All right. And the speaker cards, is there any comments from the city council?
No, I thought the zone cleanup was extremely well-done. I thought that, how many tons did we actually remove?
Legally or illegally?
I don't have the numbers just yet. They were picked up today, I believe, so Waste Management will weigh everything, but I can tell you it was five hollow-way, full-size dumpsters.
We actually, in one individual's backyard, we hauled away, I think, four motorcycles, and we didn't know that there was four motorcycles in there. The gas tanks and the engines and everything had been removed, but they were buried under all the trash. So, it was, there was that much trash out there. But I just think it's fabulous that the city gets involved and actually goes out and cleans up, and to be able to help the community where not everyone has the ability to clean up their yards, but to be able to help them, rather than just to go out and send code enforcement to get it cleaned up, it's a great thing.
I think it was really special, if I may, Vice Mayor. We also had a lot of our vendors that work with the city volunteering their time and effort. TerraCare, who manages our LMD contracts, as well as Tip Top, who has our tree contract, all donated services and crews the entire day, as well as primetime party rental for the, for the community, the picnic, thank you. And a couple others as well that I probably am failing to mention, but thank you, and thank you for being there as well.
Yeah, and we got, Marvin and I got stopped several times by the neighbors in the community coming out, and they were quite appreciative of what we were doing, you know? I mean, I think at least 10 to 12 people that we talked to, even one or two outside the zone came over.
Let's dial this zone back a little bit. Are you telling me there were four motorcycles you stole in that? Isn't that what he said? He said four motorcycles, didn't he?
No, no.
From now on, I want them supervised when they go out.
Ken called them wheelbarrows.
Good work, guys. I appreciate it. I'm sure the neighbors did, too, actually. Okay, we all done? We're good? Everybody's happy? Anybody need anything else? All right. The next meeting is Tuesday, February 25, 2020, at 5:00 PM. Carol, my day is done, but I got to go to Darrell's fundraiser. You're not coming?